Good morning, everyone. I want to call to order this meeting the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is March 10th, 2021. I will note for the record that all three members of the board commissioners are present, myself, Lee Jones, and Penny Giffens. And we will begin with our regular public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county's public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we have an agenda.
Move to amend the agenda to add item H declaring an emergency need for public work and inviting Kyle Abrams and CNH Landscaping to quote the repair of a ruptured sewer line.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, questions?
Just.
Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on amending the agenda?
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have department updates. And we have Ms. Cottle here. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks again for allowing me to come and give our updates. I think probably people are aware of a few that I'm going to share today, but they're big news and a sign that better things, I think, will come to us as we move through this year. The CDC did publish new guidance for fully vaccinated people. And fully vaccinated means that you have received both doses. It's two weeks past since you've received your second dose of Pfizer or Moderna, or it's two weeks past since you've received your one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson. The Johnson &amp; Johnson is just a single-dose vaccine where the other two require two doses. In Indiana, over 725,000 people are fully vaccinated. And that number continues to grow, so we are happy about that. I wanted to go over a little bit about what the guidance from the CDC says. And keep in mind that this is guidance. It is not a regulation. The federal, state, and local regulations still apply. But this is good news for us as individuals and being able to meet with family who are fully vaccinated in certain circumstances. So the CDC says that fully vaccinated people could consider visiting other vaccinated people indoors, and this is talking about private settings, without masks or physical distancing. So if you've been, you know, I think about my situation. My mother's been fully vaccinated. When I am fully vaccinated, I will be able to visit my mother without a mask. So I think everybody is anxious to be able to hug those family members that they have not hugged in a very long time. So that's good news. You may visit indoors with unvaccinated people from a single household without masks or physical distancing if the unvaccinated people are at low risk for severe disease. And I stress those ifs and those certain situations there. The other thing that is if someone is fully vaccinated and they are exposed to COVID-19, they're named as a close contact, they will not have to quarantine for the 14 days as long as they remain asymptomatic. So with no symptoms, you do not have to quarantine. You just monitor for symptoms. Of course, if you were to develop symptoms, you would get tested and you would isolate so that you don't risk spreading that infection to someone else. So those are good things. The CDC does still provide caution. Wear a mask and socially distance around unvaccinated people who are at increased risk for severe disease. If unvaccinated person has a household member who's at higher risk, you should continue to mask and socially distance. Wear masks and physically distance when visiting unvaccinated people who are from multiple households. So in other words, this is talking about maybe your immediate family could get together because you've all been fully vaccinated, but it doesn't mean that you can have a house party of people who are vaccinated or unvaccinated. Wear well-fitting mask and maintain social distance in public. Our local regulations for being in public remain, as does the state regulations at this time, and federal regulations for public transportation. Avoid large crowds. Avoid poorly ventilated public spaces. Continue to wash your hands frequently. Get tested if you develop symptoms. And of course, follow travel requirement and recommendations. So that is some good news. And as I said, we're happy to say that the demand and interest in vaccine is good in our county, and we're happy to continue to supply that. Eligibility does continue to change. This week, there were some comorbidity, underlying health conditions that were added. Those individuals are being, receiving texts, emails, or letters, or all of the above. Their providers, their healthcare providers are submitting their eligibility, and then that will prompt them being contacted and allowing them to schedule an appointment. So that's kind of the change for this week. You know, recently, pretty much every week or so, we have seen something change with eligibility. So I think that as vaccine continues to flow, that will also continue to happen. The state has had some mass vaccination clinics in the past weekend. They were at Indiana Motor Speedway last weekend and did over 16,500 vaccines and vaccinations. And again, Johnson &amp; Johnson, that's one dose. Those people in two weeks will be fully vaccinated. They have several others scheduled. They are in Sellersburg at Ivy Tech and in South Bennett Notre Dame. And I believe both of those are already, all the registration, all the appointments are filled for those already. And they've added Gary at Calumet High School. And I believe that that still has appointments available. So I know that the plans are certainly locally for us to be able to scale up. And that's why we're talking about transitioning our sites. So we will be able to scale up as vaccine scales up as well. We will continue to vaccinate at the convention center. So everyone who's receiving their first dose this month will receive their second dose of vaccine in April at the convention center. I do want to note, because of the transition, that as people cancel appointments, those cannot be open to the public. So what is happening is when appointments open up, our staff are calling individuals from the standby lists to fill those appointments. We are concerned about variants. They continue to be identified. Florida is outpacing all other states in terms of variant spread with 642 cases. So I would caution any spring break travelers anywhere, but especially to Florida. And Florida is followed by Michigan with 437 variant cases. And I believe that is the UK variant that is being reported. But we certainly are seeing other variants across the United States. So when we look at the advisory metrics, we are in blue in that combined metrics, but we do remain in yellow when we look at our cases per 100,000. We did see a slight uptick this past week. So that downward trend, that steady downward trend has kind of ticked back up a little bit. So we are going to watch that very, very closely. We want that to continue to go down. Remember, our goal is to be under 10 per 100,000 cases. So I think, you know, the only other thing that I would say really is not COVID-related, but thank you, commissioners, for the beautiful new workspace that we will be moving back into. We are very, very excited. It certainly is, moving is always stressful. And in COVID, it adds to that. But we are excited to move back next week. And we will be sending out details about our closure while we make that move. So just kind of to give people a heads up about that.
Awesome news. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. And thanks to everyone in your department for all your hard work. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
It's just wonderful to hear that Monroe County is doing so well getting the vaccine. It is beginning to seem like there is light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes, and I just hope it continues. And as you all say every week, and we say every week, now's not the time to let up. It is the time to maintain what we're doing. And that's why we, I don't think, are making, you know, any real significant changes to any of our regulations just yet. We want to make sure that we are truly in a good space and not letting up too soon so that we then see a surge.
Absolutely. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I'm excited to see your new workspace once it's really, really complete. I got to see it in progress a few weeks ago, and it's impressive. My goodness. It's gonna be nicer for the public. It's gonna be more efficient. You created storage for things for 50 years out.
Yes, yes.
Awesome.
It's very nice. Thank you.
Awesome. I am hopeful that we can get maybe a video tour posted on our Facebook or something just to show it off to the public because they won't really have a chance to see it because our building should remain closed to the public, although you could still make an appointment. Although you probably shouldn't make an appointment just to see the new office.
Right.
And, you know, we appreciate your staff and your hard work all the time. But to be, you know, this move and this renovation was planned long before COVID. And you just kind of just took it in stride and we'll just move over there. Get our work done, and it's amazing. You're just amazing.
Well, we were, you know, we were ecstatic to be able to do it. And, you know, this year, the, you know, the past 14 months have certainly been filled with lots of challenges and, you know, from our birth and death record system, which still isn't working perfectly, but is, continues to improve. And seems like every turn that we have, there's something else. But this too shall pass, and we will, we will get through it all.
Yeah, absolutely. It's exciting. And I'm glad for you and everyone on your staff that this is a nice little something waiting for you. And I also just want to reiterate that it is fabulous that we are in blue, but that does not mean we have zero disease in our community or zero illness in our community. It means we still have COVID. And I think, I think the biggest thing is for those who are, you know, on the list, are eligible, please get vaccinated because you will then have the opportunity to have those social gatherings with folks indoors who are also vaccinated. And I'm telling you that, you know, I danced after I got my vaccine and I danced when I heard that. So it was a lot of dancing going on. It's really good news, but it doesn't mean that, you know, we should just go back to what things are normal because they are not, and we still have to wear face coverings in public and keep six-foot distance and keep that physical distance and keep washing our hands. And there's still a lot we don't know. We don't know, for example, if you can spread the virus even if you're not ill once you're vaccinated. We don't know. Nobody knows. And so we just have to be super, super careful and maintain our vigilance because that's how we've gotten to blue. We've gotten that light. We've gotten to blue because we've been really careful and really thoughtful in Monroe County. And this is really about demonstrating to others that you care and just demonstrating in the community that you care. So please continue to demonstrate that stuff, and we'll, we'll get through this. We'll get through this. So thank you so much for that. I think we, you know, caution is still needed, but great news. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. And next, we move on to Allison Moore, emergency management director. Good morning, Ms. Moore.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for having me again this morning. You know, when we take all of our emergency management classes, interestingly enough, they always say recovery starts at the very beginning of the disaster. And so we have been working on how we will recover in Monroe County and what will be our new norm. We're not there yet, but every day, we're continuing to work through that. So I do think it's wonderful that we continue to announce to, kudos to Monroe County for all that they're doing. And I know we all want to just be back to what normal was. We don't know what that new normal is going to be when we actually are at that point. And we are succeeding. We want to continue to do what we're doing. It's just, it's fun to, you know, to be educated and go through this and then to see it all work out. And, and, you know, many people have said, when will we be able to not wear masks? When will we be able to be back to what normal is? And recovery may not be what it used to be, but it is exciting that a new normal of something will be here soon. It is tornado safety awareness month, as I announced last week. And I want to make note that the tornado, the state tornado test is March 16th. So please make note, those sirens will be activated at sometime between 10:00 a.m. and 10:30. And we will have staff members at each of those tornado sirens during this test to check all 41 sirens and make sure that they are, in fact, all working properly. And it's a great week to practice tornado safety. And I want to just talk just quickly about tornado prevention. It's something that we have definitely been educated on in the state of Indiana, and the likelihood of having a tornado is, is high. And we want to make sure that you, if you, if you do hear the tornado sirens here in Monroe County at any time, whether it's a test or it is for a real activation, that you do, in fact, practice plans and procedures. It's a wonderful time for you to talk with your children or your family, your neighbors. Call someone that's elderly and make sure that they were able to hear so that they know that if they did not hear because they're internal, then you have a system in place to notify them. Those things are wonderful to work through during our tests so that you know exactly what to do in an actual emergency when they do, in fact, go off. So I challenge families to take the initiative, to run to their basement if they have one or an interior room in their home, stay away from windows. And then, of course, check on your elderly, your neighbors, and your loved ones to make sure that they have a good plan in place as well and help each other out. We have blood drive scheduled. There are still some dates for March 17th, and that is creeping up on us. It'll be this time next week. So I encourage you, if you have availability on March 17th and can, in fact, donate, that you make an appointment at the redcross.org website. And we have dates scheduled throughout June. So if that date doesn't work for you in March, hop on to our co.munro.in.us website. And you can do one of two things there. You can check the dates for the Red Cross Blood Drive and make an appointment. Or you can, if you have not already, hopped on to our notification system, our Everbridge system. There's a megaphone there. Click to receive our text, phone, or email notifications where we send out health orders about COVID, weather-related events, and travel ordinances. So I encourage any individual. It's a free service that we offer to anyone in Monroe County. And that's all I have this morning, and I will take questions.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Moore. We appreciate you as always. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time. Just great job. We're glad you and your staff are keeping up with it.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'm scheduled to donate blood again next week. So and I'll be fully, I'll be at that two-week post-vaccine by then, so I'm really excited.
That's awesome. And Commissioner Giffens offered to volunteer for one of, to be at one of our sirens. We're waiting to kind of shuffle everyone around, so I appreciate that as well. It's hard when we're an office of two to find 41 individuals to be at our spots. But our fire departments, our law enforcement, a lot of our public safety, our highway, many, many of our partners have stepped up to assist us to make sure those tornado sirens are, in fact, working and allow us to have an individual at each spot. So I appreciate all those that have been willing to do so and her commitment as well.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. And with that, we will turn to public comments. This is for items that are not on our agenda. And you will have a total of three minutes to speak. And when you get to 30 seconds remaining in your allotted time, you will hear this tone. And that tone means you have 30 seconds left to finish speaking. And that holds true both for our public comment section here at the beginning, for items not on the agenda, and also for our agenda items. And so with that, we have Ms. Crabtree joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for the chance to make a public comment. My name is Kathy Crabtree, as you said, and I'm going to begin the public comment. And then Pete Lenzin, who is also on the call, will pick up where I leave off because we understand the time restrictions and didn't want to violate those. Pete and I are both members of the Bloomington Immigration Justice Task Force. The Immigration Justice Task Force is a county-wide group of engaged religious and nonprofit organizations and individuals working together to support our local immigrant neighbors. Our mission is to ensure our local immigrant neighbors are treated fairly, respectfully, and compassionately in our community. While the Monroe County attorneys have been very helpful in responding to our information requests, the data provided is incomplete. This makes it difficult to understand how Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE, holds are being managed locally. This lack of data also makes it impossible to accurately evaluate the legal and financial costs of the collaboration between the sheriff's office and jail and ICE. Specific data lacking includes name of the individual arrested, booking date and time, offense or charge, date and time that the individual was released by the court, date and time of ICE contact, and name of the agency that initiated the contact, date and time the individual was released to ICE, race and ethnicity, and gender. And when I submit this statement via email to the county commissioners after this meeting, I will include a spreadsheet that should illustrate the missing data points. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Pete, and thank you so much for hearing this.
Thank you so much, Ms. Crabtree. Really important issue. Looks like we have Mr. Lenzin is ready to speak. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm also with the Immigration Justice Task Force. We also understand that one or more positions are being created to mitigate this lack of data availability. This is critical not only to the public, but just as importantly, to the elected officials, county commissioners, county councilors, who need this data to properly execute their legislative and fiscal oversight duties. Therefore, we respectfully request that as the county commissioners proceed with hiring a data analyst, that they also consider a complimentary position or support position. It would appear that a data collection or data entry person would be needed, as well as a data analyst capable of effectively communicating what the data would show. It would also be useful to have as much data as legally possible be made available to the public so they can do their own searches. Immigration Justice Task Force is available and very willing to discuss this issue further as having accurate, to this accurate and complete data is very important to us and to the greater community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Lenzin. We appreciate your time today as well. Great. Thank you both for being here. Let's see if there are any other members of the public who wish to offer comments. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, please.
With approval of the minutes for March 3rd, 2021.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. And any comments or questions on this? Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Freeman, for putting together a minutes. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes, March 3rd, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Great. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, March 10th, 2021, and payroll, March 12th, 2021.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and we have a second. Good morning, Mr. Miller.
Good morning, commissioners. The total for claims was $5,017,588.68. $3,778,001.65 was for lit distribution for the month of March. Of that amount, $788,266.6 was specifically for public safety lit distribution. $411,851.81 was for E and B paving for Project 35 Airport Taxi Way A construction. And finally, $178,395.14 was for the city of Bloomington for the first installment of the animal shelter inter-local agreement. As far as payrolls concerned, the total was $1,644,604.72. Approximately 70.5% were for the direct payroll costs. The remaining 29.5% were for the indirect costs.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just that you must be about at that time.
18 days. Very excited.
That can seem like a very long time.
I know. It's been, it's been a long process. We're just very, very excited and can't wait. Can't wait.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, you're still getting some sleep, so.
Taking advantage of it while we can.
That's awesome. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this particular agenda item. Raise your hand on the yellow raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. And I don't see anyone. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call a roll on accounts payable, sorry, March 10th, 2021, and payroll, March 12th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to new business. Item A, please.
Move to approve Bluestone LLC Tree Removal Service Agreement. Unnamed Greenway Professional Services. In the amount of $15,492.27.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Whitmer?
Yes, I'm back again with the tree agreement. We're asking that Bluestone LLC be granted this contract for $15,492.27. It will be to fell nine trees on the Limestone Greenway and 72 on the Cars Farm Greenway. Only one will be a complete remove by a school crosswalk. All the other ones will be put on site. The debris will be on site. Of course, all the debris will not be on the greenway or the shoulder or culverts or waterways or anywhere like that. It'll be in the woods and such. Usually, I go to the park board with this request first, but due to a timing situation, I need to come to the commissioner. I need to come to the commissioners first so we don't run into the bat roosting season, which starts on April 1st. We want to get all the trees down before that. So that is why the process is a little reversed this time. It is a reasonable quote, I believe, too.
Great, thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, well, thank you for clarifying exactly what will happen with the debris. Of course, it's always good to leave it on site to nourish the forest. There was one thing I was a little curious about, and you may not even really have an answer to this. There's a tree to be removed that's identified as either an ash or a cherry. And I was wondering if it just wasn't possible to identify what it is, or if there's a choice between trees.
Oh, no, there's nine trees going to be removed. I don't know how many are ash and how many are cherry.
It's. Oh, okay.
There are some cherry and there are some ash.
Okay, thank you.
You know the difference, yes.
I was sure you would.
I just didn't know how many of each. Most likely, it's mostly ash.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, it's too bad we've lost all these wonderful ash trees to the ash pour, but yeah.
Yeah.
It is, it is sad.
Yeah. And is, is there a plan to replace, for example, the tree near Grandview?
We probably aren't going to replace that one because it is at a school crosswalk. So odds are that's probably not a good location for a tree.
But somewhere else?
Oh, yeah, we've been, we've been trying to plant trees every fall.
Right.
So that's our goal is to keep planting trees.
Okay. Great, excellent. And that's our mitigation plan. So perfect. Thank you for that. Let's see if there's anyone who wishes to offer a public comment on this item. Simply raise your hand, and we'll note for the record as well that this is pending Parks Board approval on this agenda item. And I don't see anyone with a question. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the agreement with Bluestone LLC Tree Removal Service?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve Racial Justice Data Project with Indiana University. Unnamed County General and Prosecutor. Number 1,000-0009. In the amount of $68,000.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Hamlin, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a request for signature on the contract specified here to be entered into between the Board of Commissioners, the Monroe County Prosecutor, and Indiana University. The contract's been reviewed by Lee Baker. The basis of this project is the fact that Erica Oliphant, as Monroe County Prosecutor, is committed to identifying any racial and ethnic disparities that arise from prosecutor, prosecutorial practices in Monroe County and reforming policy and practice to mitigate disparate impact. To that end, Monroe County Prosecutor's Office would like to contract with Indiana University Public Policy Institute Center for Health and Justice Research on a racial justice project to track and evaluate prosecutorial decision making. The project is going to be led by Dr. Eric Grauman. I believe he joined us on the call if you have any questions for him. And I'm happy to take any questions that you all might have.
Great, thank you so much, and we appreciate the information. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, well, we've been hearing from a variety of sources that apparently our data collection has not been very adequate. And I was just wondering if you actually knew if we would have the data for, for this study? Is it available?
Oh, sorry, my light just went off. Well, we anticipate being able to gather it from several sources. There's $10,000 allocated for data, like specified data reporting from both the prosecutorial case management system, the Odyssey system, and possibly from Quest, which is the probation system. Dr. Grauman and his team have worked a lot with probation, so they're familiar with the Quest system. And we expect to be able to gather the data. It's just going to be time consuming, I believe. We've had some initial meetings about how we're going to do that.
So is this data that you're hoping already exists, or is it new, or is this going to be a new effort to collect data?
Well, I believe we're hopeful that the data exists within these three systems that I've listed. It may, I believe, require a concerted effort to pour through all that data to put it into a functional analysis. I don't know if Dr. Grauman has anything to add.
Sure, hello, Commissioners. My name is Eric Grauman with Indiana University. So you're right, these data are difficult to get our hands on. That's because they're not public data. So we'll be working behind the scenes to pull across justice system, record systems to create the data. So they exist, it's just going to take a while to pull them out. We are confident we'll be able to pull those data out within the timeline that we proposed, especially given our relationships with other justice system partners in Monroe County. We are prepared, let's say worst case scenario, that we cannot pull electronic records very easily. We have a team who is very happy to sit in the basement of the prosecutor's office and go through hard copy records to create a database of old records and then set up a system essentially that would allow us to have those records into the future as well.
Thank you. It'll certainly be very helpful if that data is made more accessible and more understandable for us and the community.
I completely agree.
As do we.
This is a great project. Commissioner Giffens, comments, questions?
Yeah, I was, I think, I thought I saw something in there about gathering information from victims, and what will that look like?
Dr. Grauman?
So in addition to collecting administrative records, we'd like to make sure we capture information about folks who have been touched by the system, whether that's justice-involved individuals or survivors. So we're asking to have either surveys or focus groups done with anybody who has touched the criminal justice system to understand their experiences and determine whether or not there's, they hold perceptions about disparate impact as well in the system. We're going to be extremely careful. We've worked with survivors in the past with different projects in different jurisdictions, so we understand the caution that is needed there. So we'll be relying on the prosecutor's office is victim team to help us create contact and only allow those folks who want to speak to us to speak with us.
I only brought that up because we are collecting original data with some of this as well.
Correct.
Or you are, rather.
Correct.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Grauman, for being here today. It's really helpful to have that insight and to answer our questions. We so appreciate that. This is a great project. There are so many gaps, as we know, in our data. This is really directed toward the role of the prosecutor's office, which is great, and applaud the work of Prosecutor Oliphant to make this project a priority, and thanks to IU for making it happen. And so we really, we really do appreciate that. But that, you know, it doesn't address some of the things that are going on in other sectors of justice. And so, you know, we, this is a limited study in terms of scope, but it's very important to get it done anyway. So, and it's great that we're going to have something in the future to build off of. So excellent, thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just simply click on raise hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen. And I do not see anyone. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call roll on the Racial Justice Data Project with Indiana University?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much, appreciate you. All right, and with that, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve Midwest Presort Services Agreement. Unnamed Reassessment. Unnumbered 1224. In the amount of $35,283.95.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and we have a second. Our assessor, Ms. Judy Sharp, is with us today. Would you like to tell us about it?
Sure, Commissioners. This is a contract agreement that we do every year with Midwest Presort. This is the, when I mail my Form 11s to everybody in Monroe County, notice of assessment. And it, it runs about the same every year. They've been doing this for quite a number of years for us. It only goes up when the postage goes up a little bit, and yeah, I'm over here somewhere. The postage went up a little bit, so you can see what happens. It's going to go out. I'm going to mail my Form 11s. We were saying the 29th or the 30th of April, they have to be out by May 1st. Lisa and I were just sitting here thinking that maybe we'll mail them on the 29th, just to be sure. That's a Thursday, Friday is the 30th, May 1st is, of course, the weekend, which in the state of Indiana, they don't really have to be delivered until Monday because it's a weekend. But we never, ever send anything even a minute late. So just to be on the safe side, we'll mail them on the 29th. This is all this, this is. Last year, I included a letter to every, every taxpayer in the county about the Form 11s because, you know, everybody last year were, were real concerned what COVID was going to do. And so I decided to send the letter. We really needed the letter to go out because people don't understand our assessment periods. So the taxes that the assessment noticed that went out last year were based on 2019 values. COVID had not hit in 2019, so so many people were ready to file like COVID had destroyed everything in their lives and no, it didn't, it was not part of it. Now, this year, COVID, of course, is part of the equation, and we have, we have been working diligently to work with our business people already, pre, pre Form 11s going out like we always do. But there will be another letter. Matter of fact, the letter is going to be two-sided this time with data on it to everybody because for residential property, I hope a lot of people are on, on this call, for residential property, we shouldn't have any appeals unless we've made a mistake. If somebody says to me that, well, my assessment went up and it shouldn't. 87% of property increased throughout Monroe County. And I don't mean by 1% or 2%, just look at the sales data that we publish every day, every Monday in the paper. It has been astronomical, what's happening in the whole United States, the whole state of Indiana, and Monroe County especially, has seen values that no one has ever seen or can even compute. I was on the phone to one of our major realtors this morning, and we were both sitting there just shaking our heads. I don't know, but I can tell everybody that their property values are going to go up this year, and rightfully so, their market value. And that's a good thing. That is a good thing, but people don't like to see that because then they think their taxes will go up, and they could. Our tax rates are out. No thing, nothing has been a, a surprise to us on the tax rates. If you went in this year to a fire district, your tax rate went up. And there's a couple of those, a couple of those, a couple of those townships really went up. I think Clear Creek, what'd you see, Lisa?
20 cents.
20 cents went up, and that's the tax, I mean, that's the fire district. And that's what happens. It's a good thing. Fire district, I personally believe, and I think most of you all, or we wouldn't have done this, agree that the fire districts were a good thing. Where I live, I don't have a fire district. That's a good thing, too, because my taxes went down. I'm one of these taxpayers that, okay, it's good for some people, bad for others. But anyway, that's what this is all about, ladies, and I appreciate you always listening, and hopefully you'll approve this because I can't, I cannot set and stuff that 60,000 envelopes, even with your help. It won't happen. So this is, this is something we've done for years, ever since we've been in the business here. It makes sense. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sharp. Let's see if there are comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, and it sounds like we better do this. We'll continue if we don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, this, this is the economical way to do this because they can sort these things. They've got the machines to do the folding and the stuffing, and yeah.
And we don't.
Yeah, and, and for folks who, you know, we should really do a primer on how property taxes themselves outside of, outside of fire districts and other things, how property taxes themselves are calculated. If everybody's property increases in value, there may not be any impact at all on the property tax.
That is correct.
Because it's, it's your part of the total whole. And if everybody's parts go up, then everybody ends up paying about the same thing.
That's correct.
Generalization, but we don't want anybody to panic. But it is good news.
And that's another reason I send out the letter. You all saw the letter last year, I'm sure, and you've probably framed it like Lisa does for me. We pulled it out again today or the other day to see. You need to change it a little bit, Judy. But yeah, it's, it is a lesson that as citizens, I'm on my soapbox, I don't think that citizens are educated to, in civics anymore, obviously. And what we do is all of that. And so we try to educate the taxpayer on this side, but, you know, we need to do a better job as elected officials, as institutions of learning, to educate young people about what property tax is all about. Taxes are what gets us where we're at today. So I appreciate you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Ms. Sharp. Thank you, Ms. Surphus, we see you there in the background.
Nice to see all of you.
Let's see if we have any comments or questions from the public. Please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting if you do. All right. I don't see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the motion to approve Midwest Presort Services Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Great, thank you both for joining us, and thanks for always being on time with your, with your mailings.
Thank you very much.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item D, please.
You've got the do flopping.
I do.
Danville Matt Company Incorporated Agreement. Unname Highway Assessor and PSD. Unnumber 1135.
Yeah.
And 1234 and 1138. In the amount of $87,994.43.
Kind of interesting. How you want it to be positioned.
Maybe.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Dayton, would you please, there we go, thank you so much. All right. Mr. Enright Randolph, our surveyor, good morning.
Good morning, hi. I finally found a background I absolutely adores, the courthouse where the roads were built. So wanted to show that off. I am in my office today. I'm here to kind of bring to you, I think the easiest term is a new flyover, a new aerial, it's ortho imagery. But I think the But I think the public understands aerials and flyovers a bit more. This is something we do every couple of years. Our last flyover was in 2019, this is our 2021. This is something that would have been brought to you by our GIS coordinator. I'd taken over to kind of bring it to you, since right now we're bringing a new coordinator onboard. This was reviewed by legal, Lee Baker, and through our discussions, I think one of the best talking points is actually from Judy Sharp that you just heard from, is that our county has quite significant development, and having these flyovers every two years is pretty important the way her office operates, but it's pretty important to the way a lot of offices operate and do county business. This is slightly cheaper than our last 2019, about 6,000 bucks cheaper, so that's nice. It's evenly divided between these three funds. And then there's one other cool component about this, is there's an analyst flight tracker. So, we'll be able to see some of the raw data. The term is called a cache, that's not built out. That's basically what creates that high resolution, that three-inch resolution. The tracker won't have that built out, but we'll be able to see that a lot quicker. So, I thought that was such a cool tool. And once we get this going, we can provide that login to a lot of different departments, so we can get it a lot quicker, as far as that different scales go. And I think that works for a number of different departments quite well. And I'm here for any additional questions.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Enright Randolph. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it truly is important to keep these maps updated. As Mr. Enright Randolph said, it's not only the surveyor and the assessor who use this information. Very important for the plan department, and probably highway and many others. Thanks for taking care of this.
Absolutely, and just to tie on to the end of that, as soon as we get the data, it'll be going on our platform Elevate. So, then the public will have access to it. So, yeah, it's definitely not the surveyor's office or one particular department. It offers a great benefit to the entire county and community.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I use Elevate on a regular basis. When we get calls in about different properties, I actually get onto Elevate and look at things. So, I appreciate the fact that it's kept up to date.
Thank you, and I appreciate Mr. Enright Randolph answered a question that I had for him on email. So, thank you for that, and it would be good to learn some more about this in the future. So, you know, we have a little time. Let's do that.
Absolutely.
That would be good. Maybe we could take our viewers on a virtual tour of Monroe County. All right, so, let's see if there are any comments or questions from the public. Simply raise your hand in Zoom if you do have questions or comments. And seeing none, we'll turn back to Mr. Cockerell to please call the role on the motion to approve agreement with Sanborn Map Company, Inc.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three zero.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you so much for bringing this forward. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve a partnership agreement for the grant of easement and recreational trail signage.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Rice?
Good morning, how are you?
Well, you have your blurry camera.
No, I'm trying, I was just, there's my thumb. I'm trying to figure out why, and the heck is so blurry? Is that any better? Okay. Thank you, yeah, I was looking hazy there. It's foggy in my house. So, yeah, so this is kind of, this is good news. I'm bringing to you an agreement and asking you to accept an easement from the town of Ellisville. As you'll recall, several years ago, we received a $2.3 million grant from the state to connect our Cars Farm Greenway to the town of Ellisville. That's a project we're continuing to work on. There was a little bit of a piece of land that Ellisville had control over that we needed to access in order to work on this project. And so I worked with Darla Brown, who's the attorney for the town of Ellisville. And Highway was super helpful. They had their consultant draft up the legal description for us. And Darla Brown took it to the town of Ellisville, and they approved the easement. So, I'm asking you guys today to accept that. Once you do, we'll record it, and it will tell the world that we have the right to use this little piece of land, and then we'll be able to continue with our project. Another aspect of this, that I sort of tied up all in one agreement, is that Campbell's Park, which is in Ellisville, we're going to try to make a little trailhead there. I know Kelly Whitmer's on this call, and she may want to speak to this, because she's been working with Ellisville staff to work out. We received a little bit of a grant from Duke Energy, and we're going to create some signage, put a billboard up there. We will be able to have parking at the Campbell's Park. And so our whole goal, whenever we do trail projects, our goal is to provide connectivity. That's why we think we've been successful in getting grants from the state, because the state's very interested in connecting towns and cities and counties and parks and schools, so that people have an alternative way to get around Monroe County rather than always driving a car. Or whether it's for recreational purposes or for work. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about the paperwork that's in front of you. Really, it's just a vote to accept it, and if you do, then we'll be able to move forward with these important projects. And Kelly, if you want to say anything to the Commissioners, feel free.
We're looking very forward to this project with Campbell's Park and the town of Ellisville. They've been wonderful to work with. Once we set up the trailhead at Campbell's Park, it'll have a bulletin board, not a billboard, that of
Billboard would be nice, no, I'm kidding.
That people can go and see how far the trail is, and how far they want to walk, and where's the resting areas. Ellisville is also going to connect Campbell's Park to the Cars Farm Greenway through their new park, the field, provided there's cows here in the past. Add up sometime in the future. So, once that's done, people have a little parking lot, and they can get out and enjoy the Cars Farm Greenway. We're going out to bid on the northern section. That will hook Ellisville for a couple miles, and then we'll go out to bid again for the southern section, and hopefully it'll be all connected very, very soon.
That's excellent, thank you so much for all that information. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is a project that I remember discussing at quite some length way back when I was on the Parks and Rec Board, probably fifteen, sixteen years ago. And I know there have been difficulties along the way, but I'm just really, really pleased to see this moving forward. I think it'll be definitely a well-used trail.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I have been following this through the internal trail group and through the Parks Board, so I'm happy that we've gotten this agreement going.
Thank you so much. Thank you both for working on these detailed projects. Let's see if there's any comments or questions from the public. Simply click on raise hand at the bottom of the screen. All right, seeing none, Mr. Cockerell, will you please call the role on the partnership agreement for the grant of easement and recreational trail signage?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you so much, and we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-13, An Updated Version of the Monroe County Code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Cockerell?
Yes, as you are all well aware, that we do change our county code throughout the course of the year. And we do that in a variety of ways. But every six months or so, we like to get the code approved as whole with all those changes made, all in one spot, and then we distribute it to the libraries and other people who has resources for the public. And this is just that time of year that we've decided it's a good time to do it. We usually try to do it in the spring and the fall, and this is nothing new. This doesn't change any of the current rules in existence, it just puts them all in one place.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Not really.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, it was just amazing to see all this put together that we've been working on for a good while, so.
Yeah, it is akin to taking a look back at your last six months of work and going, wow. So, I'm sure that the legal department must be especially proud of their work throughout this whole pandemic, given all the other exigencies that we had to deal with. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Simply click on raise hand from the screen. All right. Seeing none, come back for a roll call vote on the motion to approve Resolution 2021-13.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right, thank you so much, sir, and we'll move on to the next item.
Approve Automated Doors and Access, Inc., Agreement, unnamed, 2017, Geo Bond, unnumbered, 4810, in the amount of $9,645.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Birdie, good morning.
Yes, good morning. This is actually part of the renovation of our house building. And so we had some old, I should say, automated door openers that were not functioning properly. So, this is going to provide for the update of all of them.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
This is an ADA issue, and it's something that definitely needs to be taken care of. Thank you for seeing to it.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I'm glad it's occurring at the same time that the other renovation is going on at the house building. Makes such good sense.
Yeah, that building is gorgeous. Just beautiful.
Yeah.
It was an old post office, and they did it right when they built that. The marble in there is gorgeous.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure, absolutely. So, we'll have to get that video tour done. Okay, awesome. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand from the bottom of the screen. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. Mr. Cockerell, will you please call the role on the Automated Doors and Access, Inc., Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, number, next item, which is H.
Move to approve a declaration of an emergency need for Public Works, which will invite Kyle Abrams and CNH Landscaping to quote the repair of a ruptured sewer line.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So, Ms. Rice, are you doing this one?
Yes, I'll do this, and Jeff can jump in if he wants to. So, we were notified of a situation where a, what is normally a private sewer lateral connected to the city's main line has become disconnected. We're not quite sure why it's been disconnected. The property owner strongly believes that it is because of the Cars Farm Greenway, which sits on top of the sewer lateral. And they believe that either it wasn't properly constructed by our contractor, or that something caused it to settle and dislocated the sewer lateral from the main. This is very near our Cars Farm Greenway. There is, we had tracing die put in the line last week, and we realized that it is in fact coming from that property, and there is raw sewage on the ground. Every time the rental property and the business uses their restrooms, if it goes through the line, because it's broken, it goes out onto the ground. So, it is an emergency situation that we need to have fixed as soon as we can. I've been involved with the Parks Department because of the trail, with the Highway Department, and with Health on this. There's a statute that I want to read to you that allows us to use a slightly different procedure than normal for a public work project. And that statute says that the board, and that's you guys, the Board of Commissioners, upon a declaration of emergency, may contract for a public work project without advertising for bids. If bids or quotes are invited from at least two persons known to deal in the public work required to be done, the minutes of the board must show the declaration of emergency and the names of the persons invited to bid or provide quotes. So, we have received the two quotes, one from Kyle Abram and one from CNH Landscaping. The CNH Landscaping is the low bid at $28.50. I have been in touch with them, they're able to do the work tomorrow. I confirmed that just this morning. And so we'd really like you to declare this an emergency today, and let us proceed with having CNH Landscaping fix this. They are on our approved septic installer list. And it is actually property that they own that where this lateral is connected. So, they have knowledge of the property, they have an incentive to get it fixed quickly and get it fixed right, and they are the low bid. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about that. The money to pay for this will come from the Westside Tiff, which is what was used to build the Cars Farm Greenway. Lisa Ridge and Toby Turner have been out there to look at the site as well, and they said that they would be out there tomorrow to sort of monitor the work as well. It should be able to get all done in one day.
Great, comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
There's no doubt that this is an emergency. It's not a situation that we want to have continuing. So, I'm very pleased to hear that CNH is able to get on to it right away tomorrow. I'm a little surprised that a landscaping company does this, but maybe that makes sense.
Commissioner Giffens?
This is county government working together at its best with the Health Department, the Highway Department, the Legal Department. So, thank you for getting on this and making sure it gets done.
No, absolutely, I echo that sentiment, absolutely. Let's see if there's any, if there are any comments or questions on this item. Simply click on raise hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen. And seeing none, we'll come back for a vote on the declaration of emergency need for public work.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, excellent work. And with that, we don't have any appointments today. Just a couple of quick notes for the public. Monday was International Women's Day, and this is the Women's History Month. So, a huge thank you to all the women who do so much in Monroe County, and for Monroe County, and for the people of Monroe County. Every day of the year, not just in March, and not just on last Monday. So, also a note that we have ongoing work on, within an ongoing manner with the council to provide Township Assistance Program funds. These funds have been made available to our township trustees to assist residents with things like rent and utilities, necessities of life. Every county resident lives in a township. You can go to co-monroe.us and look at the emergency management page for contact information for your trustee. If you need assistance, it's better to contact them sooner rather than later. So far, they have utilized $200,000 of township assistance funding to help keep our residents housed and fed, and with the lights on, and with the heat. And we have another $200,000 set aside into this year if that additional help is needed. So, please reach out to your township trustee. They are going to be the best source of information and assistance for you. They are going to be the best source of information and assistance for you. In addition, we'll note that we expended the Business and Social Service Grant Funding for Pairs Money through the end of April. Believe it or not, that's just six weeks away. We're going to be looking at the work session today at, at some applications for next week's regular meeting. But if you are a business or social service in Monroe County, you have, and you have COVID-related expenses that are non-payroll expenses that have not been covered by another funding source, please go to co-monroe.us and apply for funding. Again, that, that funding window will be closing based on our belief right now at the end, at the end of April. And so if you do need assistance, these are grants, not loans. And we're really happy to provide this for our business community and our social service organizations. And again, we thank the council for their assistance. Do my colleagues have anything else to add?
Given that it's Women's History Month, I just want to again congratulate Penny Cottle on being named the Woman of the Year. She, wow, talk about somebody who rightfully deserves this.
For sure. Thank you so much. All right, with that, our next meeting will be on March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day, at ten AM right here on Zoom. We're going to take a quick little break. So we'll come back for a work session at eleven-twenty-five. Everybody okay with that? Awesome. See everybody in a few minutes. Thank you.